You guys ready? Call Fairmount Town Council meeting for October thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Order. You would witness for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and the visible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, you ready, ma'am?
All right, we do not have video.
Please stand by for kind of issues.
You want somebody taller?
Do you want somebody taller? Probably Ryan Brady.
Get it figured out?
No, we still don't have video, but we have audio. Okay, so they can hear the meeting, they just can't see it.
All right, we apologize, everybody watching online that our video is not working, but at least you can hear us. Wood, roll call, please.
Trion.
Present.
Ken Poland.
Present.
Hedrick, Karen Poland, Armstrong.
Present.
Steve's name.
I did.
Oh, I didn't hear it. All right, do we have any purchase orders?
No.
None available, good. All right, review the claims in order warrants drawn the same?
Motion review of claims warrants drawn same.
We got a motion made by Angie, seconded by Karen, to approve the claims in order warrants drawn the same. All those in favor, say an aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Minutes from September twenty-second meeting.
Motion we have seven minutes from September twenty-second, twenty twenty-five.
Seconding.
All right, motion made by Karen, seconded by Angie to approve the minutes from September twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. All those in favor, say an aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on. Comments from citizens, Jake Roth regarding the twenty twenty-six concerts in the park schedule. Yes, they're approved, Jake.
What?
I said, yep, they're all approved.
Want to thank councils for past, this past year is very successful, we had a lot of good bands. As a president, I got nine bands lined up out of twelve for this next year. The dates that I'm asking for reserve are, they're all on Wednesdays. June the third, June the tenth, June the seventeenth, June the twenty-fourth, July the first, July the eighth, July the fifteenth, July the twenty-second, July the twenty-ninth, August the fifth, August the twelfth, August the nineteenth. I also am asking for rain dates, again, ran into a prime problem last year, not a problem, but I'm asking for Thursday, June the twenty-fifth, and also asking for Wednesday, August the twenty-sixth. Uh, we have one more concert, which is the gospel concert, which will be out on August the thirtieth, it's on a Sunday evening. Uh, that's all, that's all I have. Appreciate the council letting the Lions Club have the concerts out there, it's been really rewarding this next year, it'll be my ninth year. Hard to believe it's been that long ago, you know?
It's crazy.
Yeah, so we have one food vendor and one ice cream truck will be there or something like that. So, um, the Lions Club co-chairors are Dave Kraus and Mike Greenwall. They've been really outstanding, they have done a lot, so three of us, we decide who we want and all that kind of stuff, so. Got a possibility of four new bands this year.
Great. All right, you got a motion?
A motion to go ahead to, um, have the concerts in the park for twenty twenty-six, um, for the month of June, July, August, rain dates, June twenty-fifth, August twenty-sixth, and then also, um, the gospel group on August thirtieth.
I'll second. We got a motion made by Angie, seconded by Ken to approve the dates presented by Jake Roth from the Fairmount Lions Club for concerts in the park.
No, 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 that's wrong, concerts at the stage.
Oh, concerts at the stage, I'm sorry, that's right, they're concerts at the park. I'll just resign after this meeting. All right, all those in favor, say an aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, same? Motion carries.
Hey, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Jake, I just want to say, Jake, thank you for what you do. Nine years that you've been doing this, and here we are, the middle of October, and you're already getting the ball rolling for next year. People have no idea what goes on behind the scenes.
I'm not ever, I've never been one to wait for the last minute on anything.
In this, you can't, you gotta get booked early. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brady Dreyer, Commonwealth.
Good evening.
Good evening.
With the project update, we are, Commonwealth, we're working with Atlas, estimating, uh, on some scheduled finalization, so we'll, um, have that before too long, but, um, the other thing is the watering plan, so expect some of those activities to occur towards the end of the month. Um, and you'll start to see some progress, we're moving probably early November, that's pretty much it from a project standpoint, so although no equipment's really here yet, things are moving behind the scenes. Um, with that, we've got a couple dispersion requests tonight. Um, number ten for Spitzer, Harriman, Stevens, and Personier and Johnson, and the amount of twenty thousand dollars. We also have number eleven, Commonwealth Engineers, and the amount of nine thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars. And with that, I'll request approval.
We have a motion to approve, uh, number ten, number eleven is presented by Brady Dreyer from Commonwealth.
A motion to go ahead and, um, for number ten for twenty thousand, number eleven for nine thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars.
There, we got a motion made by Angie, seconded by Karen to approve the payouts to Commonwealth. All those in favor, say an aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, say? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Uh, Clements Home Solutions regarding a door-to-door permit.
Good evening. How are y'all doing today?
Good.
Great. Yeah, I was just wondering what the process would be for us to be able to canvas or go door-to-door, uh, we do roofing, guttering, siding windows. That's a problem, I've, I've never gone in front of the council before, but, um, but it's, uh, and, and so I don't know if you have any questions there, we're from Muncie. Have a very, if you look this up on Google, fourteen hundred Google reviews, five star. We're not a company that's a fly-by-night organization for around twenty-seven years. And we have a few customers already in the town, we usually can't, it's not around, you know, the whole, where we come from.
What hours would we be doing on?
I think we got seven hours.
Whenever, uh, usually eleven, uh, it kind of varies, we have from noon to like seven, it runs, but as the time changes, we'll roll that night.
Like, can they do it by order?
By ordinance, um, we are actually, no solicitation, so you guys can actually set that, what, what you want. If you want to do normal business hours and then cut it off. That's fine.
I'm, I'm, I'm having a business hour.
What hours are you thinking, sir?
Typically, it's like eleven to seven through the, when the days are light later, because you kind of catch people when they come home after work if you can. And then, but that changes to ten to six, that's, you know, because eventually it's dark by six, you know, so we don't, we don't run after dark at all. So, and then we try not to be in there too early, you know, make sure people, we're not trying to be a nuisance by no means, I'm very, I mean, it's, uh, you know, this is the oldest school of form of marketing there.
Yeah, I did my first campaign walking.
So, you understand, and, um, the culture has really changed over the last five years, and it's all come back to this. It's probably eighty percent of my lead source now is from knocking doors and talking to people. People don't trust the internet anymore, so right now, at least. So, we've had to go back to reverting to old school, and, and so I don't know, we do background checks on my guys that, that do, and I can show you that if, if you want to say, hey, I can turn in a background check, you know, every, every employee I have.
How many people are you expecting to be going to do?
Typically, they're running in teams, teams of two to three, uh, two to three, and it'd just be in the neighborhood. You know, an average person will knock about eighty doors a day, like I said, about two appointments, that's kind of the usual phone, so.
Are you just looking at, excuse me, Monday through Friday weekends?
Usually, we don't run, we run Saturdays, or whatever, I'm saying Monday through Friday. I've got, he leads my team, I don't, I don't always remember, so.
What, what we'd ask is if, when you come to town, you come to our water office, it's just the same building, just right across the hall here.
Okay.
Let the girls know in case we get phone calls, and they can let the police department know in case they get phone calls. And just a contact number, maybe who's in town, or who we can get ahold of, you know, maybe if it's you, if we have an issue, we can get ahold of somebody.
Okay.
Yeah, just come and let them know when you're doing it.
Okay. They just have to take a photo copy of the ID of the guys for a minute, but that's all we need.
Okay.
So, just come in and give them.
Yep.
Photo copies. Tells us, we know what names in case we have, what happens, it's happening. We have another company that doesn't do it, you're fine, and we'll give you, say, hey, we got these three guys. If somebody ran, uh, we can tell them if you can.
Thanks, Chief.
And y'all are typically nine to five here?
Uh, eight, four.
Eight, four.
Eight, four.
Need a motion?
A motion to go ahead and have Clements, um, Home Solutions, um, go to door-to-door, um, timeframes, um, set eleven AM to seven PM, and then, ten AM to six PM, Monday through Friday.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Motion made by Angie, seconded by Ken to allow Clements to do door-to-door permits. Thank you, sir, or door-to-door solicitation, permission, you permit. You're good to go?
Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate you coming and asking.
Hey, thank you very much.
All right, reports from the department heads, uh, President, um, thank you to everybody, all of our town employees, uh, Main Street, Fairmount, museum board, everybody for successful museum days, uh, I thought the crowd was bigger. It seemed like it was, we had great weather, which was nice. I also want to give a shout out to our fire department and police department for a life-saving save that they had over that weekend, job well done. So, pass that on to your guys, Clint and Chief, that, that was great, that they got to save a life that weekend, so. That's all I've got. How about we go to streets and parks? Mr. Gossett.
Evening.
Evening.
I did get some roads all ordered, um, I got twenty-five tons, which is about half of what we usually get so far, you can't really hold that much, but, uh, price is a hundred and one eighty-four a ton. That's delivery included in that price, so we're looking at two thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars roughly, I haven't got the exact bill yet for that, but I do know, let you know. Been working on our road surveys for LTAP. That's essential for the CCMG grants, that is coming up at the end of this month to apply for, I'm hoping to get a couple roads in for spring of next year. Leaf machine isn't started yet, we'll be starting that at the end of this month, that runs through December. Um, so, if you see anybody out or asking, why aren't they picking up my leaves, they may be back for now, and once we get that machine out, we'll have it posted on our page, Golden Board. Down at the park, talked a little bit about museum days, we really didn't have any issues. Might thank everybody that helped, we had a good group of people again this year. The only thing that we would like to change is going away from that concrete barricades that we use, and try and get maybe some plastic ones that are a little more user-friendly for us. I get some prices, I don't know if the museum would come together with us.
We probably should have them help us out on that, since it's their, or Main Street too, is it going to be at the park too, or just?
No, it's just Main Street.
I think we should get the museum involved in that too. Don't you think, Ed?
Yeah, that's, that wouldn't be, that doesn't hurt to ask.
Right. And I agree, they are better, the water ones.
Those are a pain to move.
We, we gotta borrow equipment, gotta borrow the chain till even left him. So, it's probably not, not safe for us. So, I'll look into it, we'll get some numbers.
Okay.
Uh, down at the park, Scotty closed off the road that's, runs beside the school for the season, will be open once school's back out. Uh, gonna be working on Wind Rising, Memorial Point, baseball concession stand, and the fountain, probably have that shut off when the leaves start falling, so it's not full leaves. Heating and cooling will be down, checking our furnaces out for a yearly inspection tomorrow. And then we have Gunner Tree Service coming down, giving an estimate, roughly thirty-five hundred dollars to cut the deadwood out of twenty-six trees. And we should be starting anytime this week when the leaves are still off. And then finally, the Second Harvest Food Pantry is coming up on the twentieth for the last one of the year.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions, Ryan?
Nope.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thanks, Ryan.
Ryan?
Yes.
I will visit Chauvin House starting Wednesday for Friday evening for half, half time, I can't take a break.
All right.
Thank you.
Chief Dollar.
Good to you. A few things, we'll start out, a request for the speed survey on Walnut Street. Uh, we conducted, um, the survey pretty much for the first week of October, um, all the guys did one, if not a couple of them. Uh, we did a total of eight surveys through that week, seventy-three cars were observed, um, our high speed was thirty-eight, the average speed for Walnut Street was twenty-three point seven miles per hour. Out of the seventy-three cars observed, only eight were over thirty, so that's thirty-one or higher, and obviously thirty-eight was the highest speed out of all that. Um, so take that data what you will, um, whatever you guys want to decide, but that's what we have. If you want to look at them, we have all the forms, all the sheets that were done, and I have a high low on them. So, you're, you're more welcome to look at those.
I've got a weird question about that.
Sure.
Is there a certain timeframe?
We do them all, so there's times on here, um, I, we blend it, everybody does it, so we're getting all the shifts, obviously, we're not doing it at one in the morning. Didn't have a guy do it at one in the morning. So, uh, we try to do an hour, we try this at an hour, obviously, we take a call or something comes up, and we gotta leave from it, it'll get cut short, a little bit shorter, but most of them are all an hour long. Talking with some of the guys, I sat at Walnut and Adams, down by Fox Appliance, facing south, I know a few of the other guys sat down by Tyler and Warren, facing north, so we got both sides of the block, and that's the main problem, obviously, we weren't north of Washington Street, we just focused on South Walnut. So, I, I, we did a pretty fair survey, uh, both north and south, man.
I just didn't know, like during getting your kids to school faster.
This was six-thirty, and in the high thirty-eight, actually, I know who it was, I said something to him, um, was a person headed to school.
That's what, okay, that's what.
Did you guys some backlog on this, during museum days, I, somebody stopped me, had a complaint that lived on South Walnut, about the car speeding before and after school, and I reached out to the chief and asked him if he would just go down there and do a speed survey, so that's what prompted all this.
So, I think on the second, we just did two, one at fourteen-thirty, two-thirty, one at six-thirty PM, this is our time, uh, one, um, I did seven AM that morning to seven fifty-three, on September thirtieth, there was, uh, one to six fifteen, this is, yeah, six fifteen PM, seven fifteen. I said, we, we were all over the place, one was done at eight-thirty to nine-thirty at night, just to be fair, um, so I think we covered it all pretty well.
So, what is the speed limit, thirty?
Thirty, yeah. So, I got that, again, if you guys want after this, you'll have conversations, uh, we can, we can talk about there.
Man, I think your study pretty much says it all. I appreciate you getting that so quick.
And there's only a couple, we try, you know, if we can see it, we'll deal with it, but thirty's fast, you know, a residential road.
Yeah.
It's quick, it looks quick.
I tell thirty's fast everywhere.
So, we got a grant, um, I'd like to thank Trevor Brain worked on this, um, we got awarded twenty-nine thousand dollars to purchase new tasers.
Awesome.
Um, so, we'll be, that was already turned in, um, we should be receiving those the first of December, and then we'll have training to do with them. Our tasers that we have now are obsolete, we, taser does not have taser cartridges for us no more, nor batteries, so what we had to do to replace cartridges was find aftermarket dealers, and what we're finding is, we bought, I don't remember what we just ordered back in the spring, but I want to say we ordered like eight, and all that eight, they all expire by this October, the cartridges, so, I mean, it's, they still work, um, it's just a ploy to buy more cartridges, but it's hard to find them, they just get harder as we go, so we're gonna switch over to a taser seven. With that, we'll, we're allowed up to five instructors, with that, it was a whole bundle, um, it comes with all of our training aids, all the tasers that we need, um, which is six, it's replacing all the full-time guys, and then our park, or our, our reserves will get our taser tubes. But I will send, if I can, Officer Brain, since this was his, I mean, he put all the work into it, um, October twenty-ninth and thirtieth to South Bend for taser instructor training. Um, only thing we'll need to pay, and I can bring it next meeting, is what the hotel cost is going to be for that night, um, that's, uh, but the train is free.
And he gets to come back and shoot everybody?
He'll shoot me.
Once you take the ride once, that's good enough, isn't it?
You want to do it?
Yeah.
You want to do it?
I still got, Dieter's out, um, we got guys on vacation, uh, I got Joe out this month, uh, getting, everybody's getting their time in off, yeah, we'll get to them, we have this every year. Dieter, um, has a torn rotator cuff, had an MRI last week, um, has a consultation tomorrow, so I'll have more whether if he's here, if it's going to be long-term or not, so. We got that going, then we also, uh, we're complete with the cage door pop, that was installed in the Tahoe for the dog, all that is a hundred cent operational, along with the heat alarm. Trevor's gonna be getting us apps, so I'll get alerted, um, multiple guys, up to ten guys can be alerted if we have a heat issue with that, um, car, while the dog's in there, it'll alert all of us, whether we're on duty or not, because of the alarm, so a pretty cool, um, system that we got. Then, everything else is done with it, so I think we're complete on the whole, I think.
Great.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for museum weekends, that was very nice. Chief John.
Good evening.
Evening, sir.
Uh, we're up to four hundred and fifteen runs to date. Uh, we have our open house, uh, Sunday, this Sunday, from one to fourth, welcome the whole community to come, we look forward to it every year. Uh, the only thing I really had was, we had a programming issue with radios this week, which Eric and Kelly were aware of, uh, they've been repaired, I think Kelly got the bill today. So, uh, same thing that Dollar had, our old existing radios, everybody thought they were good to go, and Jay and Kay missed something on their programming, so, but that's all I got, you guys got anything for me?
Thank you for everything for James Dean.
Clint, personally, for me, thank you all so much, because that was my best friend.
Yep.
And she's, and she's gonna get on the evening, I think, as well, but she just got home.
Good.
So, they figured it out.
That's, uh, that's our second save in a month, so.
Good.
We got one power company.
She's very personable, or something like that.
It sucks getting out of bed and to go to all these amputations, but you get one, it's worth it.
Yep.
We appreciate it, thank you.
We appreciate you guys. Water and wastewater, Mr. Bud Shelton.
Bud Shelton, water and wastewater. It's been a little while, but, uh, you guys approved man-selected, come out and do infrared red scan on the wastewater and the, and the water side, uh, he did perform that, and I'm waiting on a report back from him, uh, to kind of give us a heads up on what he found. I do, I do know that they said it was, it was, uh, went pretty well on our, on our behalf, so. Um, I got, as I mentioned before, it's been a little bit, but we had some problems with the wastewater plant with the clarifier, clarifier's still down, we're meeting our permit, uh, everything got better once we took that clarifier that was down, off, offline. We're looking to get some things repaired on, on that clarifier, and I'm not sure, I'm talking to, uh, one guy who was, who was, uh, given to me by a friend through the Alliance, uh, I think it's Schubert Treatment Solutions, and so I'm talking to him right now, he came in and looked at it, told me what was, what looked to be wrong with it, and so I'm waiting on him to see what the parts would cost and come in and repair it. Let's see. We were gonna, you guys might have received an email, maybe a premature email, on Orpman well drilling, coming in and putting a meter in on well number five. After discussion, me and Robert decided it might be better to go ahead and meter at the plant here, uh, our incoming influent pipe that goes into our aerator, and that way we could be more specific on measuring our incoming from all three different wells. Up till now, well, up, still now, uh, it's a calculation and a, and a, an hourly estimate, so we'd be more, uh, specific on that, so instead of spending the money that was on that, that bid, uh, I think we could do ourselves a favor and, and meter all of them in that one spot. I don't know the cost, I'm still, we're still getting, uh, people to bid on that, so. Other than that, that's, uh, all I have, if you guys got any questions.
Anybody have anything for Bud? Thank you, Bud, and thank all your guys for what you did over the weekend for James Dean. All right, anything under building maintenance?
Nope.
That's good. And financial report?
Just one thing, um, the Indiana League of Municipal Clerk Treasurers, they offer a virtual series after they do their annual classes and things like that. It is actually a state called meeting for one day, November the fifth, that one, I do have to attend, um, I would like to attend all three days, again, they are virtual, so no travel involved. It is a total cost of one twenty-five for all three days.
A motion to go ahead to have Kelly, uh, do the virtual meetings, uh, for three days, it costs a hundred and twenty-five on November fifth.
Fourth through sixth.
A four to six, okay. Well, I have to.
Well, that's, that's the state called meeting.
You got a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Motion made by Angie, seconded by Ken to approve Kelly's training, it costs a one hundred and twenty-five, all in favor, say an aye? Anybody opposed, say? Motion carries. APC, Airplane Commission.
Not a whole lot yet, um, but there is, there are, um, public, uh, theory for the comprehension plan that that we have put together to put toward the commissioners, so, and I'll ask them, they come and ask questions on it, it is online, if you want to look at it. So, that's pretty much what I've got right now, sixteenth, I'm sorry. October sixteenth, which is what, Thursday?
Yeah. All right, we have any comment? Alright, we have any committees? New business?
I wanted to announce.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I want to announce the, the town of Fairmount's going to go ahead and have trick-or-treating on October thirty-first, five to eight. We did it this timeframe because some people don't get off until after five, so we kind of added an extra hour for those that can't make it until six or close to whatever. So we decided five P.M. to eight P.M. And we haven't heard anything for sure from the block party, but I'm assuming it's from other people, it's going to be November first, but we don't know any other dates. So we're waiting on to get a confirmed, somebody from one of the churches to come to the meeting and talk about it.
And the thirty-first is rain, shine, no matter what.
Tsunami down back there, it don't matter.
No.
After last year.
Yeah, no matter what, rain, shine, snow.
Dress worn, kids. Old business? Anybody got anything? Couple things. Kelly and I had a virtual meeting with the trash company. They're willing to come in and service the town. We're looking at a minimum of ninety days before they can do that. And they have to get eighteen hundred toters lined up to go get us fitted into the routes. We don't know for sure. I mean, that would put us roughly, what, middle of January? And he thought with holidays and everything, we'd just wait till February first. We still haven't got a quote from him or anything yet, but we, we are in talks. We know there's an issue with our service. For those that missed that meeting, we have sent him a letter from our attorney, give him thirty days, which is up. And there has been issues after that thirty days, and we are aware of it. So those that are listening online, those that are here, we know there's an issue. It may get worse. It may get better. We don't know. We can just keep calling, keep documenting, but we are working on it. We hope to have something more concrete so we can do our out with the current service and in with the new service and whatever legal things we have to do for our attorney, we will. But I just want to give you an update on that.
And what is the company's name?
I wasn't going to say that yet. Yeah. And that is something, they did say that with them having to fit us into their route, because they're pretty full, it sounds like. It may be, one part of town gets picked up on, I'll throw days out there, because there's not even, they couldn't give me a day on Wednesday, and the other part of town gets picked up on Thursday, and maybe into three days. So that'd be less time the trucks are in town, quick pickup and out. They do have bigger trucks, so that will help too, as far as not having to get loaded or full, then go unload and then come back like we're currently doing. So just stay tuned to that. I just want to give everybody an update on that, what's going on. The second thing, Karen and I and Kelly met with Mike Ayala. Is that how I'm saying his name right? He's the owner of Berkeley Street Trailer Court. And he knows he has a mess. He has a major mess down there. He's not denying that. He says, out of all the things that gets fixed, there's maybe only twenty percent that he can do. The other eighty percent, he's probably not going to get done. This trailer court is going on the market for sale. His plan is to sell all Indiana properties. And if he gets some of his, he's got, what, eighteen total? Is that correct? He's got eighteen total across the United States. A few of them are on the market. His goal, he doesn't really want to get rid of his Indiana properties, which includes, what, us, Alexandria. Hartford City, except there's only three, I think. And he would like to be able to sell some of his more profitable ones and take that revenue and put it into Fairmount and the ones in Indiana. We've asked him for a timeline for, he's going to supposedly give us one for two years if he does keep it. We did agree to him that we would hold off on the water, the board's approval on this, shutting it off until after the first of the year. Because we shut the water off, these people just become double victims. He has some major water leaks down there. What was it, two hundred and?
Two hundred and twenty-eight.
Two hundred and twenty-eight thousand gallons of water was used down there off of one meter, right? For the last billing cycle. That's a fifty-five hundred dollar bill, roughly, correct? So he's aware of it. He took full ownership of everything. He encourages us to put the liens on the property. He understands that, so we'll get our money if he does sell it. If anybody wants to invest a million dollars, that's what the asking price is. Let us leave it at that. Doesn't, this doesn't pertain to us, but the Alexandria people, that mobile home park down there is currently under contract. He told us to be sold. So that might be good news for those folks down there. But his long-term plan, it would be great if he could get the money. I mean, he wants to renovate what ones are there that can be renovated, and the other ones he wants to demolish and bring in new mobile homes. I think there's a great market here for it. I, I told him, I mean, I hope he sticks with Fairmount, and I hope he does what he says he's going to do. But if not, hopefully somebody else will come in and do the same thing that he has planned. So we shall see. So you guys go with that, give him till the first of the year? Everybody up that? Okay. So he's supposed to be sending us all contact information and everything else. We haven't seen that yet. This meeting was last Thursday.
Is he going to fix the leaks right away?
He's going to fix what he can. As far as the demolition, he demoed, I don't remember how many he said last year at other parks. He demoed quite a few. He has a demo crew out of Washington that he uses. And I guess until he has the money for them to come and do multiple ones, it's just not feasible for him to have them come and do one at a time, one a month. Because they're coming from Washington. So I can't believe there is somebody here locally that he could get, but he uses this out of Washington. He's in over his head. He jumped into this with both feet, and he knows that. Like I said, he owned everything. And all the problems he's had with Alexandria, with us. So we'll just see what happens. I think with winter famine and the freezing, we're going to have a mess down there.
Yep.
And we even asked him, Kelly asked about even zeroing out, because there's what, three meters, Bud? Am I correct? There's three meters there, about, you know, zeroing out one meter, however, I don't know the term you use for that.
If we could shut down one section of, if he didn't have anybody living in one of those metered sections, if we could shut that down and kind of eliminate that leaking process that's happening there. The residents are too spread out to be able to do that.
He is drafting a letter to his fourteen tenants down there to let them know what's going on. And so he has his fourteen out of what, fifty-some?
Forty.
Fifty-six lots.
But see on the ones across the street, and one behind that one, there's another one.
Yeah, he's got all of those.
All that.
There's only two lots down there that are privately owned, and they're metered on their, by themselves.
Right.
So you're going to give until January, what?
It's just, it's, it's, I mean, it's like I told him that meeting, I said, you got us between a rock and a hard place. Because you're not paying us. Your people are paying you, and you're not fulfilling your end and paying the water bill. But yet, so they're a victim of you right now, and then we turn and shut their water off. Now they're a victim of us. And it is, it is a no-win situation. It is. No, and it's, I think they're.
Did he verify that, like, they pay the water?
Yes, everything down there is rented. There is nobody except for the two that own their own. I didn't ask.
As much as he's not managing anything, and how bad he's managed everything, does he even get lot rent from, does he know who's paying and who's not?
I'd be shocked if he does.
If I lived there, I would. That's just a thought.
And it is, and I've had a couple of the tenants reach out to me privately and ask that they should pay their rent. And I'm like, I can't tell you not to do that. So that's up to you. But I will say that if I was in your shoes, I know what I would be doing. And I think they have picked up on that. And just to clear up some rumors, we are not evicting anybody. I think we discussed this before. The town cannot evict anybody out of there. So I don't know where that got started. We're not evicting anybody out of their trailers. We're trying our best to work with those people down there and etcetera. It's just, it's a bad situation for everybody, for us, because he owes us quite a bit of money. They're paying quite a bit of money to live there, and they're not getting their full service from him, so.
Who mowed?
I do still mow.
I know. I, I noticed that we mowed the other day.
He did say something about, he has some maintenance crews. He went from eighty-five employees down to twenty? That's not right. I got it written down somewhere in here, but yeah, he went from eighty-five employees down to, I think it's even less than twenty. I want to say he said eighteen.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, he's. Personally, I think he could sell a bunch of them off, because he's going to get his head above water.
Collect money and pay it.
You have a fourteen residents, you can't collect that much money.
Free money, though, I mean.
Oh, yeah, it's free money, but.
It depends how much is, how much is there? Thousand. I was going to say, if it's a thousand bucks.
I heard it's nine, I heard it's nine fifty a month.
The lady told Ryan and I, we talked to a thousand dollars a month, is what she pays.
And that includes their lot rent?
And the trailer rent.
The water, yeah, everything except.
And then, of course, the trailer rent if they are in this.
Well, he's not paying much. He's making bank.
Well, I think he robs Peter to pay Paul, and I think Paul's broke now too, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's, yeah. We'll see. I mean, I'd, all I can do is take the guy to his word and see if he proposes it or not. And if he doesn't, and we, and he was, and Belinda, I'm sorry, Belinda from area plan was here with us too. And she made it very, very clear to him that come January first, if you have not fulfilled what you said you're going to do, I will come out and use guns blazing. She goes, and I will tear all those down, and I will bill you for it. And we told him the same thing. Come, you know, the first of the year, if you haven't said, you know, give us your timeline, keep us, you know, if it goes under contract, he's supposed to let us know anything that happens with that property. And if he doesn't, we're going to send you a letter, Kyle. And we're going to, yeah, we're done messing with him. And actually, we, the, the state health inspector came in with Kelly and I, I don't know, a month or so ago. Oh, my gosh, his violation list was unbelievable. And he, he just sort of begged us not to shut the water off because of the headache that it will cause. But he understands that if we have to, we'll get our liens in place. So if it does sell, we get paid. And let's wait till the first of the year, go from there. It's a bad situation. And I hate it. And the people that are down there, if you're listening tonight, or if you're here, we will give ample opportunity for we shut that water off to get you, so they can get a plan in place, and we will work with them.
I know there's a couple of them already.
Yeah, there's a lot of them looking. So he may end up with an empty trailer court before long. Yeah, yeah, they have the same problem that we did. They can't, they have to send an email, and those have been going unanswered, and so.
I know. I've seen two loopholes so far, two different times.
That's all I had on that. We're getting towards the middle of the month. I thought the fifteenth, we're supposed to know from Lily whether we're moving forward or not. So hopefully here in a couple of days, we'll get an answer on that, whether we're going to get that Lily money. So as soon as I hear, you guys will hear. Anybody else got anything under old? I think that was a lot. It's more like said the past four years. Sorry.
Motion adjourned the meeting.
Second. Alright, good. Kyle, you want to come over this or anything?
Let me, yours is marked on fire.